This time.
Yeah, mine too. They're saying.
Can you see far?
Yeah, I see fine. I see fine out.
I see. Yeah, I can see closer.
I'm pleased to call this 6:30 PM meeting of February 6th, the Dublin City Council meeting to order. If we'll have Chief Cutler, please come and say the invocation and I'll pledge the flag.
Good evening. Let us pray. Lord, thank you for allowing us to gather in this place tonight and handle the business of the city of Dublin. And I pray that we would honor you in whatever we do, that we are respectful to one another, and that we focus on what brings us together and not what separates us. Lord, guide us in our steps. All these things, I pray in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As you can see, Mayor Kite's unavailable tonight, so I get to take on my official role as Mayor Pro Tem. We have a special presentation to start off first. We want to make a commendation for Don Avery in honor and appreciation of the work that he's done in our city and our community. So at this time, I'm going to read the commendation that's been signed by our mayor. At a later time, I'll personally present this to his wife, Farrah. So this is a commendation and honor and appreciation of Don Avery, whereas the city of Dublin desires to honor the life and contributions of Don Avery, who served the community as a leader and a volunteer, whereas Mr. Avery graduated from the U.S. Air Force Academy in 1978 and served in the U.S. Air Force and Florida National Guard as a pilot and squadron operations officer, being honorably discharged as a captain and senior pilot. And whereas after discharge from the Air Force, Mr. Avery graduated from the University of Florida with his Master of Health Science and Master of Business Administration. And whereas Mr. Don Avery came to Dublin, Georgia in 2008 and joined the Fairview Park Hospital team as chief executive officer, a role he held for 17 years. And whereas, under his leadership, Fairview Park Hospital received numerous accolades in recognition of excellence and quality of care, including recognition as the number one medium-sized hospital in Georgia. And whereas, in addition to his role in leading Fairview Park Hospital, which is one of the largest and most important employers in the Dublin Lawrence community, Mr. Avery was also active in our community, serving on and chairing multiple civic and college boards, including most recently as a volunteer director of the Dublin Lawrence Chamber of Commerce, as well as serving his church as an elder and teacher. And whereas, Mr. Avery was married to his wife Farrah Avery for nearly 41 years, with daughters Amelia and Meredith, and grandchildren Madeline and William. Now, therefore, I Joshua Kite, Mayor of Dublin, hereby offer this commendation and honor and appreciation of Mr. Don Avery and call upon the citizens of Dublin to honor and memorialize his many years of service to our community. And that was signed by our mayor today, February the 6th. I just want to say, Don Avery was a personal friend to many of us here in this room. I know council member Tess Godfrey served as a physician recruiter under Don for many years, and Don actually recruited my husband and I here to Dublin. We would not be here today without his active membership in our community, and we will certainly miss him as a dear friend and community member. So if those who are here tonight in honor of Don Avery, would you please stand? Thank you so much for being here this evening. We're going to move on now to another special presentation. Tonight, Ms. Burke is going to give us information on the new Black History Banner honorees, and Chairman Benny Jones is going to help with this.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Valeria Burke, also known as V Marie on 1079 Jams, 107.9 FM, right here in Dublin, Georgia. And it is truly my honor to recognize the 2025 honorees for the Black History Banner. I'm very excited about this. So the city of Dublin's Black History Banner Committee was created to recognize and honor individuals who made a positive impact within our city. Each individual recognized by this committee will be honored through the display of a pole banner hung throughout our historic downtown from January 1st through March 1st. The local honorees were selected from nominations submitted by the public. Dublin's first Black History banners came as a result of the city council attending a National League of Cities Convention, where the meeting place was decorated with banners from around the world. Dublin City Councilman Gary Johnson returned to Dublin with an idea for celebrating Black heritage and history with banners downtown. And it is my honor to present the 2025 honoree, the first one, Dr. Benjamin Daniel B. D. Perry. And will his family please come forward? Dr. Benjamin Daniel B. D. Perry spent his life in service to Lawrence County as a highly-regarded physician and educator. Born in 1872, educated in Zion Hill-Sandersville and the Haynes Institute in Augusta, he went on to graduate from the Harry Medical College in 1902 and began practicing medicine that same year in what was then Bruton. He married and had a son to Ella E. Cummings and eventually had an office on the top floor of the Cummings Building, which still stands on Madison Street in downtown Dublin. During his over 50 years as a physician, Dr. Perry taught school and helped establish several organizations in which he held positions: Landmark Masons, Knights of Pythias, Eastern Star, American Woodsman, WMBS Society, and Lawrence County Benevolent Association. When the O'Conne Fair Association fell on hard times, he helped repurchase the lands and served as its general manager for 25 years. As a faithful member of St. Paul AME Church, he served as a steward, treasurer, and trustee. After Ella's death, he married Eliza Jane O'Neill, and together they raised five children. Three became notable teachers in their churches and local school systems. One became a nurse in DC, and his son became an anesthesiologist practicing in New York. In the 1950s, the Lawrence County Board of Education named a $300,000 school, the B. D. Perry High and Industrial School, in his honor. And my grandmother, Janola Adams Burke, actually taught at that school from 1964, segregation until 1970 to 1971 with integration. Dr. Perry died in 1957 at the age of 85 years old. Ladies and gentlemen, once again, we honor Dr. Benjamin Daniel B. D. Perry. Oh, you wanted me to jump in, didn't you? Okay, all right. And now we move on to our next 2025 honoree, Mr. Johnny B. Hall. Will his family please come forward, once they have a seat? Mr. Johnny B. Hall was born on April 9th, 1947, and was the son of the late Aldine Godfrey Hall and Booker T. Hall. He was raised on a small farm in Dudley, Georgia. Johnny B. was a graduate of Millville High School. He was married to Diane Primus Hall, and they had two children, Tracy and Stacy Hall, and one grandson, Evan John Hall. After graduating from the police academy in 1971, Johnny B. served his community as a Dublin police officer for several years. Johnny B. was a vision and a dedicated leader at a young age. After fulfilling his dream as a police officer through much prayer, he decided to continue his law enforcement career with the Georgia State Patrol. In 1976, he became the first African-American Georgia State Patrol Officer in Dublin, Georgia. After many years as a Georgia State Patrol Officer, he was promoted to Training Officer. This position led to jobs at the Atlanta Olympics as part of their security team. He was also the personal security officer for former Georgia Governor Roy Barnes. In his spare time, he enjoyed farming and cattle rearing. He was also assigned to several board of director positions. He was on the Board of Directors at O'Conne EMC, the Exchange Club, and the Boys and Girls Club of Lawrence County. He was nominated as a Senior Citizen of the Year by the Black Festival Committee. He was also a nominee for Senior Citizen of the Year by the Dublin St. Patrick's Committee. After a prestigious career in law enforcement, Johnny B. retired and later became the co-owner of Serenity Funeral Home along with Reverend Dr. Kendrick K. Mack. This partnership led to a successful business located in his hometown of Dublin, Georgia. Johnny B. passed away on September 26, 2019, at the age of 72 years old. Once again, we honor the 2025 honoree, Mr. Johnny B. Hall. And that concludes our presentation. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Burke.
Of course.
We're moving on now to more celebration. We have lots to celebrate tonight with our Service Pen Awards, and I'm going to turn that on over to Josh Powell.
All right. Tonight, it's always a great thing when we get to recognize the long and dedicated service of our employees. So I'm excited tonight to invite Eric Cunningham from the Police Department to come forward. Eric has achieved 10 years of service with the city of Dublin, and I think Chairman Benny Jones has got you a pin there to commemorate that. Eric, we appreciate all you do in the Police Department, and congratulations on making it 10 years. Fully vested. Next, we'll invite up Michael Watkins. Michael works in our sanitation department and provides a very vital service to our community. I may have seen you out working today. Michael's celebrating 20 years of service with the city of Dublin, so thank you, Michael, for your dedication. And last but not least, Scotty Poole. Captain Scotty Poole works in the Fire Department. He is celebrating 30 years of service with the city of Dublin. We appreciate you and your service.
We are so grateful for our employees who work dedicatedly to our city and to our community and citizens here. We're going to move on to our regular agenda items at this time. First, we need to look at our January 16, 2025 City Council Meeting Minutes. We've all had the opportunity to review that in our council packets. Do I have anyone who wants to make a motion? Okay, I have a motion from Councilman Mascaro and a second from Councilman Griggs. All those in favor? That passes. Now, we're going to move on to approval of bills over $15,000. Those bills are also in your pocket. Does anyone want to make a motion about the bills? All right, we have a motion from Councilman Griggs and a second from Councilman Brown. Let's take a vote on that. All those in favor? Anyone against? Nope. Okay, we're going to move on. We have no purchases over $15,000 for this meeting. And so we're going to move on to Agenda Item Number Four. We have a presentation by Mr. Greg Chapman with Nichols and Colley for our FY 2024 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. Thank you, Mr. Greg.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm Greg Chapman with a partner with Nichols, Colley, and Associates. We're a public accounting firm with an office here in Dublin, Georgia. Currently, we have eight offices spanning across Georgia, currently employing 250 people approximately, given day with interns that could fluctuate, but happy to be of service to the city for the fiscal year 2024 audit. Our responsibility as your auditor is to perform an audit in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States. And as a government, we also have to follow governmental auditing standards. And our objective is to provide a reasonable but not absolute assurance on the basic financial statements and that they are free from material statement. And basically, what that means is, we can't give you absolute assurance. I can't look at every transaction for the whole year, so we use sampling and testing to render our opinion. We do consider the internal control structure of the city in designing our audit, but we don't render an opinion on the internal control structure itself. Happy to say that our report, we did render an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion. That is what you're looking for in a financial statement audit, and that just means that your financial statements are fairly presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. The city does elect to prepare a annual comprehensive financial report, which is a little more in-depth. I'll talk about that a little more in a moment. And that was submitted to the GFOA and to the Department of Audits as required by state law before December 31st. In addition to your financial statement audit, you do receive an audit over federal awards. That's typically called a single audit. And any governmental or not-for-profit entity that receives over $750,000 of grant funding from the federal government is required to have a single audit. So the city did have that this year, and we performed a single audit, and we did also render an unmodified opinion on your federal grant spending for the fiscal year 2024. I mentioned the GFOA. The city does submit their report to the Governmental Finance Officers Association, and they have a process where you can submit it for grading to see if it's in accordance with the not only accounting principles, but also the expansive requirements that GFOA requires. The city did present their 2023 audit. It was awarded the Certificate of Achievements in Financial Reporting for the 36th consecutive year for the city. And for 2023, as of the day I made this PowerPoint, only 59 cities in Georgia had received that. So it is... A lot of cities don't prepare it. They prepare, you know, smaller governments prepare just what's required by state law, but 59 cities in the state also submitted theirs. Looking at a graph of your total revenues for the city for the year, this is for all governmental funds. It's not just the general fund, so this does include the SPOS funds, the grant funds, your capital projects funds, all of those funds combined. Taxes made up 48% of that. That, of course, is not all property taxes, local option sales taxes in there, hotel motel, franchise insurance premium, and then other taxes make up that 48%. Property taxes make up about 14% by itself, and those other taxes make up the remainder. On the right side, you see operating and capital grants. That's the grant funding you receive. Part of that's federal grants. That also, based on the way the state requires it, includes your SPOS funds. So the SPOS funds are considered capital grants for financial reporting, so they are reported in that. The city also had a DNR grant, a grant for Madison Street and ARPA, which made up the remainder of that, or the majority of that. As far as your expenses, it should be no surprise that the majority of your pie is spent on public safety, which is a positive. That's what we would rather spend money on is being safe. And that is in line with what we see with other governments. About 43% for 2024 was spent on public safety, 26% on public works, and then the remainder of that is split across general government, which is your administration, purchasing, HR, those functions, housing and development, and culture and recreation. The next slide is just a snippet of the general fund for the 24 fiscal year. I try not to spend too long on this because at this point, you're seven months into the next fiscal year. So this is history at this point, but for the fiscal year 2024, the general fund itself had 15.7 million in revenues and 18.5 in expenditures, with other sources being transfers from other funds and other financing sources being 2.7 million, with a slight decrease in fund balance for the year of $79,000. At the bottom, looking at fund balance, the majority of your fund balance is unassigned, meaning that's in essence reserves for the city that they can use going, the city can use going forward to provide services. A strong fund balance is definitely a positive so that you're not out having to borrow from the bank just to get you through the property tax collection. So a healthy fund balance is definitely a positive for the city. The next slide just shows that in a different graphical presentation. As I said, 6.1 million is your total fund balance. 5.2 of that is unassigned, which means that the majority of your fund balance is available for the city to spend. The remainder of that gap is funds that are non-spendable, such as inventory and prepaid, and the committed fund balance, which is your encumbrances, funds that are already obligated to be spent in the current fiscal year. Then finally, looking at your enterprise funds, just three brief columns for your major funds. Major funds are those that have a larger activity for the year. So water, sewer, natural gas, and sanitation are your major funds in the financial reporting statements. Positive net operating income for all of those funds. Then there's non-operating and other. All of those had reductions there. Some of that going to the general fund and other funds for various purposes. And then ending net position for those, the change is at the bottom. They're positive for water, natural gas. It was a negative for sanitation, but all three of those funds have healthy reserves to sustain them going forward. The next slide shows the non-major funds, Riverview Golf Course, Special Facilities, and Telecom. Telecom had positive operating income, and Riverview and Special Facilities, which is a new, the Special Facilities is a new fund for 2024. Not a lot of activity there this year, but ended up with a positive change in net position of 678,000, but that is mostly, or that is all the assets being transferred in to establish that fund. So that's what happened there. Golf Course ended up with a positive after transfers and capital contributions from SPOS for purchases for the purpose of the golf course ended net position with a positive change in net position. And again, thank you all for allowing us to provide the service to the city, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Chapman? We're so grateful for the services Nichols and Colley provides us in our city, and we're especially thankful to Blake Daniels and his staff for keeping us all in the clear there and super proud of that certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. So thank you again, Mr. Chapman. At this time, we're going to move on to a first reading. Since this is a first reading, we will not open the floor for a public hearing, and we will not have a vote tonight, but this will be a first reading of Ordinance 2501 to rezon 16.85 acres of property located at parcel 101B087 from P Professional Zone to R3 Multifamily Residential Zone. Josh?
This is Ordinance Zoning Map Amendment 2501, an amendment to the official zoning map of the city of Dublin, Georgia, as previously amended for the purpose of rezoning 16.85 acres, more or less a property located at 2778 Georgia Highway 257. It's parcel 101B087, Dublin, Georgia, from P Professional Zone to R3 Multifamily Residential Zone. The proposed use is as transitional housing. This lot is, people that have been in Dublin for a while may recognize it more as the Old World Harvest Church property. That is on 257. It's directly across from the entrance, the 257 entrance to Perry Ellis. And the, there was some, the original application did indicate one of the potential uses for this, if this property were to be rezoned, as a type of homeless shelter. At the planning and zoning meeting that was held, there were some updates to that and indicated it was going to be transitional housing for men. And the use was going to be limited to, there's two buildings on the property and the large church, everybody's familiar with it. There's also a business office that's near the front, near 257, and that is where this housing was to take place. The council has before them a recommended ordinance from the Planning and Zoning Commission that I just read, but it does include conditions that are in there if the council were to approve the rezoning that is recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission. So this is a first reading. The second reading will be at 12 o'clock noon on the next council meeting on February 20th.
So again, this is a first reading. No vote is necessary, but if you do have comments to make about this, you can make those tonight at Citizens Comments at the end of this meeting. We're moving on to Agenda Item Number Six, which is Discussion and Action on Resolution 2505 for the award of a contract to Lintile Construction Company for the surface water plant renovation project. City Council had the opportunity today to tour many of our facilities, and that included our surface water plant. And we're excited to see the work that has already been done there in the labs and in some of those windows being replaced, and we're excited to see the continuation of that project moving forward. So Josh Powell, do you have any information about that?
Sure. This is Resolution 2505, a resolution by the mayor and council of the city of Dublin, Georgia, authorizing the city manager to negotiate a contract for the repair and renovation of the surface water plant with Lintile Construction Company pursuant to request for proposal number 24111501 to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the same, to authorize change orders, set an effective date, and for other lawful purposes. We budgeted money this year to use for the continued efforts at the surface water plant, which is on Parker Day Road, as Mayor Pro Tem Colby indicated. The proposal we received from Lintile Construction Company was in the amount of $182,176, and that is slightly over the budget we, funds we have remaining after the windows are being purchased by just over $7,100. Staff does recommend that this be approved, and we'd be able to approve the resolution so we can negotiate a contract with them. This will be paid for out of 2024 SPOS funds.
So this is coming from our sales tax revenue SPOS fund. And do we have any council members with any questions about this? Okay, do we have anyone who wants to make a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve from Councilman Jones and a second from Councilman Godfrey. Let's take a vote on that. Everyone in favor of this, say aye. Any nays? If you have no nays, this passes. We're moving on to Agenda Item Number Seven, Discussion and Action on Resolution 2506, approving the terms and conditions of the 2025 heat grant. We were excited to hear from Chief Moon earlier tonight about being awarded again for the heat grant, which covers some of our cars and employment costs for the police station. So I'll turn that over to Josh Powell for description.
This is Resolution 2506, a resolution by the mayor and council of the city of Dublin to approve and accept the terms and conditions for the Governor's Office of Highway Safety heat grant award to authorize the execution of documents for the acceptance and administration of the grant, set an effective date, and for other lawful purposes. We have been in the heat grant before and took a year off, and now we'll be back up at 100% funding for the salaries involved in this. This does fund two positions in the Police Department, some vehicles, as well as some ancillary equipment that goes along with that, laptops, internet data, printers, paper, radar, and lidars if that's needed. This will be for the remainder of this fiscal year through June 30th, and we are currently in process of applying for the next fiscal year's grant now. It equates to $279,991. Of that, $118,776 was already budgeted, so that will represent... Of that, $118,776 was already budgeted, so that will represent savings in that amount to the general fund. So staff recommends that council approve the resolution so we can sign the terms and conditions to get the grant.
We're always very appreciative when we can have grants that cover expenses for the city instead of taking it out of our local property taxes or sales taxes. So do we have anyone who wants to make a motion on this?
Motion to approve.
Heard lots of people, everybody. So I heard we have a motion from Councilman Griggs, and we have a second from Councilman Jones. And all those in favor of this resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? All right, the resolution passes. Our last agenda item is discussion and action on declaration of surplus. We have some fabulous items for you to bid on. You can see those here.
These are, yep, these are, we have eight items here. Some, there's a lot of toilet bowls. You can buy those, but only if you do not put them in your yard in the city of Dublin. Yeah, there's some pictures if we, I think there's pictures in there.
No pictures.
We do have some items. There's Bush Hog, straight greater blade, a lot of toilet bowls, a lot of Scott SEBA and cylinders from the fire department. There are a number of vehicles, a Ford Explorer, Chevrolet Trailblazer, Ford F-150, and the little bug mobile that we call it here at City Hall. We've all, we've received replacement vehicles for all of these that were planned to be surplus once we got the new ones in, and the new vehicles look great, by the way. Thank you for that, mayor and council. Much better than these old vehicles. So we ask that you declare them surplus so we can oxen them off.
There you go. We're going to see if there's any, any pictures up here for us to see. Oh, yeah. Okay, so we have all of these items up for bid. Do we have any questions as far as where these items will be, or they be?
They'll be on Gov. deals.
On Gov. deals, all right. And so if you have any comments, you can save those for Citizens Comments at the end. So we're going to take action on this declaration of surplus. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilman Griggs and a second from Councilman Brown. We're going to vote on this motion. Everyone in approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Have any nays? This resolution passes on the declaration of surplus. We do not have any board appointments tonight, and so at this time, we will open it up for Citizens Comments. This is your time to have up to three minutes to state your cares, concerns, or questions. You can state those to us as council members, but this is your time to talk, not ours. So Heather Browning will be taking your name, so if you'll just please state your name and your address for the record, and your three minutes will begin.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, council.
Good evening.
When they appointed positions. I just want to take a few minutes to bring something to council's attention. I spoke with Councilman Brown and Councilman Jones and also city manager Josh Powell about this issue that occurred on February 3rd at my residence.
That's station.
Where, I'm sorry, for the record, my name is Jerome Pullen. On Monday, February 3rd, one of the public works departments here in Dublin, namely the city, city gas, had come out to do some work on a new build across the street from my home. And when my wife left early that morning, she came back a few hours later to find materials from the gas company on our front lawn. And no one had taken time to notify us by correspondence, maybe a day prior, or ringing our doorbell or knocking on the door to say, hey, we're going to be on your property doing this, that, and the other. And when my wife came back and she inquired, and she asked why we weren't notified, she got crickets. Moving forward, I came home around 2:00 that afternoon after leaving home that morning and seeing the stuff. My wife had texted me and told me about the stuff on the front lawn because I hadn't left yet, I hadn't yet left the house, and she had informed me about the materials that were laying in our front yard. I went out around 8:00, 8:15, and I saw the materials, and I just kept driving. When I came home at 2:15, I come home to find a backhoe sitting off the side of our property with a six-foot deep hole and a six-foot pile-high dirt in my front lawn. Again, no notification, no knock on the door, no ringing of the doorbell to say, hey, we have to access your front yard to access this gas line for the house across the street. Furthermore, you're digging for a gas line, a natural gas line. I think that we should have been afforded the information or the notification to say, hey, we're digging for a gas line, we're looking for a gas line, and we're in the house, we're none the wiser. If nobody had said anything, if we didn't notice anything, nobody said anything, you're digging for a natural gas line. What if that backhoe had hit that gas line and caused a spark? Nobody said anything to us. So what I'm saying to you as council, going forward, if you could speak with department heads of all the public works, all the public utilities, and going on someone's property, give them proper notification, ring the doorbell, knock on the door, see if someone's home. And we didn't, we weren't afforded that, and we were home. And to boot, I mean, it could have gone sideways. We didn't have to be those nice homeowners to go out there and be decent to the workers out there. We didn't have to be those nice homeowners. Fortunately, we were. But we just wanted a clear, concise answers to why you did not give us notification or knock on the door to tell us that you were going to be on our property digging a six-foot hole and not tell us anything. Going forward, I hope that department heads of all public works, public utilities, all public utilities can give the homeowners, property owners a heads up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pullen, for those comments.
Next. Thank you. Hey, family, how y'all doing? I'm Carla Wright Johnson, formerly of 301 Brookhaven Drive, Dublin, Georgia. Homeless right now, but I'm still in the city. However, I'm not going to discuss all my business in front of y'all because I want to talk to the mayor, but you know, he's not here. So I'm just going to hand you this, I'm unemployed as well. So can you talk to the director of this car and tell her I had four interviews? Nobody called me back here, and I'm going to leave it like that. That's the bill to show you that I spent that much money in your city today from South Carolina, Farming, South Carolina. And I have, I need three bodies picked up from Farming, South Carolina. I'm working with the federal government, the CIA, the Pan, whatever you need me to do for the city. I'm your woman. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Johnson. Anyone else tonight? Vonda?
Y'all thought you'd seen the last of me, I know. I'm Vonda Morton, proud eighth-generation native of the sovereign state of Georgia. February is also Georgia History Month, so I thought perhaps a short list of the states' first was appropriate, and these are in no particular order. Georgia was the first colony to cultivate grapes in 1735. Georgia was the first state to charter a university, the University of Georgia, in 1785. The first cotton gin was invented in Georgia by Eli Whitney in 1792. Unfortunately, Whitney was a Yankee, but he was in Georgia when he invented it, so we'll cut him some slack. Wesleyan College in Macon was the first college in the entire world chartered specifically to grant degrees to women in 1836. Georgia in 1943 was the first state to lower the voting age from 21 to 18. In 1866, Georgia was the first state to grant women full property rights. Cherokee Indian leader Sequoia, a Tennessee native, after creating the Cherokee syllabary, developed the first paper written in that language, the Cherokee Phoenix, in New Ichota, Georgia in 1828. Georgia native Crawford W. Long is considered the father of anesthesiology for his groundbreaking use of ether as an anesthetic in surgery in 1842. Bob's Candies, founded in 1919 in Albany by Bob McCormick, pioneered the use of cellophane to wrap candy. McCormick's brother-in-law, Gregory Keller, an Arkansas native, invented the machines that twist the candy canes, cut them, and bend them into the candy can shape. He did that in the 1950s. And of course, Coca-Cola was invented in Georgia in 1886 by John S. Pemberton, a Confederate veteran. February 12th is Georgia Day. What will the members of this body be doing to honor the state they call home? One suggestion I could make would be to start honoring the state flag at the beginnings of your meetings.
Thank you, Ms. Morton. I always enjoy hearing and getting a new lesson on Georgia history, and it's great to have those reminders as well. Thank you. Does anyone else have a comment?
I thought you were going to do the pledge. Let's do it, Ms. Morton, I'll do it with you.
Stay in order, sir.
I'll do it. I don't know it by heart, I gotta read it.
I want to read it, too.
Let me see it, I'll do it with you. I'll do it with you. You're tenacious.
Because I got some business, too, in the city.
Ready?
You go.
I pledge allegiance to the Georgia flag and to the principles for which it stands: wisdom, justice, moderation, and courage.
Can't say we never did it now.
I got it now.
All right, anyone else for comments tonight? Gentlemen, no one else. All right, then I'm going to move on to council comments. We're going to start down here with Councilman Brown.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Just want to congratulate all those that were recognized for their years of service with the city. Also want to continue to remember Don Avery's family. He touched a lot of lives here in Dublin, Lawrence County, and the surrounding areas. He certainly will be missed. Also want to thank Blake and his staff and Nichols Colley for the job they do every year. Just appreciate everybody, everybody being here. Mr. Pullen, you and I had a, had a conversation, and I think you've had a conversation with Mr. Powell, too, and I think we all would agree that it could have been handled a little better, but we appreciate your comments, and we'll take that. Thank you. Thank you.
Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, I'd echo what Mr. Brown said, congratulate everyone on their awards, service pins, and the families from the Black History Banners, new Mr. Johnny B. Hall and Mr. Biddy Perry. Gradulate them, and Blake, when I first got this, I thought this was just you. I said, Blake, give us this big old thing. Thank you for, you and Mr. Carl, for giving us this financial review and all that is done, and thank you for that. As far as what we're doing on my Black History Banner, application is out for 2025. You can pull it up on the website. I have two applications here personally, so you can pull it up on the website, send in the nominees, you have to July the 11th of this year to do that with me, and you'll be notified what's happening. So that comes with a $50 application fee. If your nominee is selected, it'd be a $100 banner, you can get up to a maximum of two banners put up, so that'd be great. So fill it out, and working on some more things, but you could do that. And also, I would like to announce that on February the 20th, at 12:00 noon at the Catherine Gray Resource Center, there will be a food giveaway for families with children. That's with Community and School, Catherine Gray Resource Center, Marissa's Closet in partnership with the HHCH, will give away food, nice, from what I'm getting, it's going to be a nice giveaway. You have to fill out, so it's for families with, with children. So if you know someone that got children, send them by there, there will be a food giveaway for them to take, and it's nice. Like I said, it's giveaway from, when I've seen from the list, it's going to be a nice little bag to take home. So put that out, put that out for February the 20th at 12:00 noon. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to say one more thing. Yeah, didn't have the privilege of meeting Dr. Perry, but certainly had the honor and privilege to know Johnny B. Hall, and he was always the consummate professional. He even gave me my first speeding ticket as an 18-year-old. And, but, he was so kind, and he said, I'll be sure not to call you daddy. But anyway, I knew him a long time ago. Thank you.
Councilwoman Godfrey?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Colby. Just want to say thank you all for coming out tonight. Congratulations to all the nominees for the Black History Banners and also our employees for their great service. Also, this is Black History Month, so don't forget about our Black History in Georgia, as well as it's Valentine's Month, so let's show some love in our community. And that's all I want to say, and thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Have a good night.
Thank you. All right, Councilman Mascara?
I want to thank everybody for, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I want to thank everybody for coming out. I didn't know any of the gentlemen that were represented in the Black History Banner presentation, and being a business owner downtown, I see them every morning, and it's important to a lot of people that we continue to do that. And then Ms. Morton, it's important to you that we represent our state, and I was, not teasing you, but I, you've been adamant that we do it, and I gave in. I spent nine years in the Georgia National Guard, and I never did the Georgia pledge, just one of those things. So anyway, my point, my point is, and then Jerome coming in and talking about what's important to you and your property, I think we have to always remember that our council meetings are a platform for you to talk and to give concerns and wishes that you see for your community. And the more active the people that are, that come to these meetings, the more you're giving us the feedback and the information we need to represent you as taxpayers in our community. And that, I say it a lot, but that's why we're here. It's really our only, our only job. And I just appreciate the service of all the, the people that have celebrated years of service. We got a chance to go around as a council today, and in three years, it's one of the most excited I've been to see the progress and the growth and what we're doing. I was joking around with Chief Cutler today. He was purple when we pulled up, he was so excited, and I don't, I said I don't ever think he smiles that much in church, and I was proud for him. So the more you express your need, the more we can respond. So I just appreciate you all coming and doing that. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Mascara. We have Councilman Griggs.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I'd just like to thank everybody for coming and echo what everybody else has already said, and have a good weekend.
Do you have anything, city manager?
My comments?
City attorney?
No comment.
Heather Browning?
No comment. Okay.
I want to thank y'all for being so patient with me, running the first meeting as Mayor Pro Tem. Thank you all for coming out and sharing your concerns with us. We don't know what we don't know, and so I think it's really important that we all come out and speak. I always enjoy hearing council comments, I mean, citizens' comments, because that gives us an opportunity to see what's working well and what's not working so well in the city and to continue to improve. But I can say that I am very, very proud of our employees, and I'm excited to see how far our facilities have come in the last three years with doing the facilities tour today. With that, we'll adjourn tonight's meeting. We'll see you on February the 20th at noon.
Tap, tap, tap. Picture hammer. Meeting adjourned.